Good evening, I'll call a meeting to order at this time. You will please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll call on Councilman Scott to lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this time we have tonight, Lord, as we come together to discuss the business of our community. Oh, we thank you for the blessings that you've provided for us over the last few months, Lord, since we've met. Lord, we thank you, Lord, that you kept us safe during the storm. We know there's lots of, lots of issues, Lord. We just pray that you continue to help us in our recovery. We're just so thankful for the mercy that you've provided to our community. We lift up those that are sick or not able to be here tonight, Lord, or those in the community that have needs. We just pray that you'll just keep continuing to bless our area as you see fit, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, two to five, United States of America. Consider the Republic, which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. I do know there are some, some changes, additions to the agenda. One is to add a presentation for South Smithfield Water District. And also, I would like to add a presentation for Service Awards. And then also, it was brought for us today on consent agenda to discuss some sick leave Those are the known changes that I do have. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
The first two will be the last.
The first two will be presentations. I think we may have some discussion on the sick, on the sick leave.
We just got that, I think, in the mail today. I would like to maybe revisit that next month so we can look and see what our written policies are, see if this is consistent with our policies, or if we need to adopt a policy. I just don't know much about it, just haven't gotten it.
Whatever the council prefers, we, we don't have anything in policy about a maximum number of hours that can be transferred. Anything over 350 hours has to come to the council for approval. That's basically what the policy is.
Does anyone have any, is, is there an issue with delaying this, I guess, for 30 days until we look at it further? Any issues from the council if we delay the sick leave request? Okay. Right. I don't see any issues there, so why don't we leave that one off of the agenda? And we'll pick that one back up next month. So that what I do have is add to presentation, the South Smithfield Water District presentation, and then also add to presentation, Service Awards.
I gotta make a motion, we approve the agenda as stated.
Have a motion, we have a second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose, motion carries. Thank you. So, first of all, I want to apologize for my voice. I'm gonna try to get through the meeting. Mayor Punchin, I'm glad you came in, because I might have to lean on you a little bit tonight, so bear with me, please, my voice goes in. Okay, so, the first presentation that we have this evening is for Greg Seiler to go forward, discuss the. Also with Greg, you have Phyllis Pearson with you, is that, is that correct? Petway Mills and Pearson, welcome. Greg, I'll turn it over to you when you are ready.
Hi, council. I'm sorry. My name is Greg Seiler, and I am the Finance Director for the town of Smithfield. This is my second PowerPoint presentation. I think prior to trying to lay out something for you on PowerPoint, we always just had our auditors present our audit. This gives you, I think, a bit more detail than, than you had gotten in years past, and I'm hoping that council and management will find the report beneficial. A full report can be found on the town's website, and for those of you that would like a hard copy, we have a handful. We don't get nearly as many as we once did, just because of, we now post a PDF version on the website that can be printed off. The town's financial records were audited by Petway, Mills, and Pearson. I think this is about their fifth year, perhaps sixth year, for auditing town records. The accounting firm is in Zebulon, and Phyllis Pearson, if you'll stand just for a second, is here to assist in the presentation and to help answer any questions that might come up. Okay, so, once again, this year, the town received an unqualified opinion. That means that our auditors concluded that our financial records for each fund has been fairly represented and free from any material misstatements. In other words, the audit report that you have, that's online, can, you can trust the data within that report. It's primarily the auditor's job. So, I've got a lot of information here, and I'm gonna speed through this rather quickly. Please slow me down. If you have questions. So, we're gonna cover the general fund activity this evening briefly. We're gonna look at the general fund, fund balance, that's the number of interest always to our governing body. We're gonna look at the general fund debt, we're gonna take a quick look at the water sewer enterprise, as well as the electric fund. Phyllis is gonna present audit results, and we're gonna look at the, some of the future financial challenges for the town. Okay, so, this year, just to cover briefly some highlights of the general fund, total revenues that we took in was just over 13 million. Now, that number does not include any loans that the town took out. Those are strictly monies that the town came into from regular course of business, and neither does it include any sale of assets that we put on gov deals periodically. That was an increase of just 1% over 2015, and unchanged is the ranking of our, of our revenues. Property tax, as you all are aware, is, is the biggest piece of the pie. We depend heavily on sales tax. That's not something we have much control over, those are revenues that come from the state. Franchise tax, beer and wine sales, sales and use tax across the state. And then from sales and service, that's primarily parks and rec and sanitation. Those are the big revenue generators for the town. So, the property taxes that we see, received was based on 1.07 billion dollars worth of value, virtually no change from the prior year. The county does our tax collecting for, so that citizens don't get two bills, one from the city, one from the county. It's all combined into one bill. They continue to have a phenomenal collection rate, just under 100% of what they have billed customers for. Expenses on the general fund side, 11.97 million, that's an increase of $530, 30,000 over last year. But that increase was primarily due to debts that we paid off early. We paid off over $600,000 in retired debt. A couple of them were 20 years in advance of their maturity date. I'll show you a little bit more on that later. And of course, our primary expenditures are, to no surprise, police and fire. They consume a large part of the budget. Parks and rec, and then transportation, that's streets, et cetera, streets and garage. I'm taking the time here to show you what our fund balance is, but this, I wanna mention, this number is different than what's reported in the audit. The LGC dictates how we calculate fund balance, and it includes both assigned and unassigned dollars. But I'd like to take the time just to show you unassigned, in addition to what's in your audit book. The audit will state, I think it's in the management discussion and analysis, that the fund balance is around 61, 62% in the general fund. But that includes all of our monies. Unassigned is about 55.9%. Still a very healthy fund balance, but you will see it often talked about in those two aspects, unassigned versus total. Our fund balance jumped up a million and two this year. Took the time to research to see why we had such a large jump in fund balance, and the bulk of it comes from greater sales taxes than we expected from the state of North Carolina. We got $100,000 more in vehicle taxes. Those things are hard to forecast, because the numbers are constantly changing, but there, well, has been a record year with automobile sales, and so, all of that translates into more revenue dollars for the, for the town. Of course, the LGC just requires that our fund balance be 8%, that's the very minimum. If we were to even get to that level, they would write us up, because it would be far less than what other towns have, and that's the other part of how we get graded, their minimum compared to how we compare to other towns. But our, our 55.9% unassigned, or 61% assigned, is well within our fund balance policy of 25%. That's a policy that the town set on its own. This is just a 10-year picture of what fund balance looked like. This was a troublesome area here for a couple of years. It has since then increased every year, and that is absolutely the direct result of management and staff, that that fund balance number is looking so healthy today. Any questions so far? That's just dollar volume of unassigned, charted out for us over a 10-year period. 6.7 million unassigned dollars a day we have in our general fund for emergency situations. Fortunately, during the hurricane, the town didn't have to shut down, but you want these kind of dollars on hand for catastrophic events. You know, worst-case scenario, a storm could, could potentially shut the town down for an extended period, so you don't ever want your savings account to get to this point Our debt within the general fund stood at 8.8 million at June 2016. Even though we borrowed dollars, that's a decrease of 1.3 million. Just a little bit in new debt, just under 400,000, and we retired 1.6 million. And it's my intent to bring before the board, with town manager's approval, the option of retiring one additional piece of debt with USDA. We paid off one half of the EMS building, and there was a second loan on there also with USDA, and I'll have some conversation with Mike, and if his approval, we'll bring that to you with, for payoff. I took the time here just to show you a couple pages within your audit. This page 52 and 53 within your audit book. It outlines all of the debt that the town has. You'll see within those pages, a blank area there, and it just simply means that that loan was paid off last year. You'll see that in several instances, where there is, it's listed, but there's nothing there. Those are loans that were all paid off. Water fund. A better picture than the year before, but still not supporting itself. We had total revenues of 5.7 million, that's up 297,000 from the prior year, expenses of 5.996. So, already you can see here that we didn't collect enough revenues to meet expenses. It's much improved over the prior year, but still not completely supporting itself. Unrestricted cash and investments of 4.16 million, restricted cash and investment of 1.4, and current liabilities of 1.1. Expenditures exceeded revenues by 218,000. Look where it was last year. We were, had a million point two shortfall. The biggest part of that is our sewer treatment costs worked to our good this year. I'll show you a picture of that here momentarily. We didn't transfer any money to the general fund. One did, this is the snapshot from the 2015 audit. Just taking the time to show you this, where it actually shows that we lost tremendously in the water fund last year. In comparison to in this year's audit, page 28, if you took a look at that, it's showing a much smaller loss, 218,000. Debt position for the water fund, 2.9 million outstanding at June 30th. We borrowed a lot of money last year, 200 and, 2,2,610,000. Lots of water sewer projects, INI, the sand removal project. And we retired 137,000 in debt. This is our fund balance in the water fund, was taking a nosedive here as a result of water and sewer for a couple of years, down to 48% last year. Went up this year to 70%, but that's artificial. The reason it has jumped this year, in spite of the fact that we had a loss, is at June 30th, that 2.6 million dollars that we borrowed, we had over a million dollars still sitting in our account that was unspent because the project is ongoing. So, on paper, this looks favorable, it's temporary. We're quickly spending those loan funds on the projects that it was intended for. Took the time to show you sewer treatment costs over the 10 years. The fact that it went from 1.8 million to 2.7 in 14, 3.1 in 15, and kinda projected it would go higher this year, fortunately it didn't, it has come down. That is mostly due to weather, perhaps in part due to some of the INI correction that we've done. Is that fairly stated too? So, I looked at where we are in the first quarter of this year compared to last year at 2.4 million. The first three months of this year were pretty much on target with, with where we were the year before. In fact, we're $25,000 under. So, if that continues, if Hurricane Matthew doesn't cause issues for us, and I'm told it shouldn't, because indeed the county sewer plant was offline, so sewage wasn't feeding into the plant to be treated, probably a good thing. Otherwise, we could expect to have tremendous sewer treatment bills from that storm. I'll give you an update on that later, when the monthly invoices come in. Electric fund, good shape. Revenues at 18.77 million, that's actually down, but nothing to be fearful of, because our costs came down. Total expenditures at 15.4, our expenditures are down even more. We had a surplus of, it went up 2.6 million. That's directly related to why we could offer an additional rate reduction of 2.5% effective August of this year, because we had such an, a surplus. Restricted cash and investments at 533,000, liabilities at 2.3 million. And so, revenues exceeded expenditures, as I said, by 2.6. We did transfer to the general fund 243,000, 86 for payment and lieu, and 157 for capital assets, and the current budget year, that's been cut back even more.
That's really, you know, Greg, I mean, that's, we're using the term transfer, but it's really allocated cost type. Transfer is just a seemingly dirty word in our budgets.
Right.
That 157, though, was a transfer. It was just a straight transfer. That was last year, last budget. But that was eliminated in the budget year that we're in now.
It's called payment and lieu of property taxes, and a transfer that we're allowed to do by general statute for, based on capital asset value. Those are legitimate transfers, but as a board, you still have a right to diminish or stop those completely if you desire.
We're still doing the allocated cost recovery for personnel costs, finance calls.
Correct, but it's not considered a transfer anymore, because we're not actually moving funds, we're now paying it directly from that, that fund. 3.4 million in debt, the decrease just comes from normal retirement of debt. Fund balance, jumped from 20.7% last year, due to our subplus, 2.6 million, up to 43.7% this year. But I, I expect that to fall next year, because we're passing that savings on to the customer. I'm gonna let Phyllis take it from here for a moment, just to talk about single audits and, and audit results.
Greg, can you go back one slide? I had a question. It was about the electric fund debt position.
Debt? Here?
Yeah, that 3.4 million, that doesn't take into consideration that debt is still due for the asset sale that each community had.
No, and we've never reported that.
Understood. But that debt is dwindling as well, based on the, we're still making those payments, that comes off the top of the initial sales, does it not?
Well, we don't make any payments directly ourselves.
It's, the Eastern Misfala Agent, they, they take care of that for us, but it's based on the way money's transferred to the town, right, as far as the sales.
If I'm understanding your question, Travis, we do pay for wholesale power.
Right.
It comes out of that. We pay it to, we paid it to Electric Cities. I'm not exactly sure how it's happening since it was transferred to Duke.
Right. I guess my reason for asking the question is knowing that how healthy that fund has become, and once that debt is paid off, it's gonna put us in a remarkable position, based on we continue to stay in electrical service, selling, you know, for increased cost of what it's produced at. So, I think it's important for us to look at that moving forward. I know it's not part of this, but...
Right. And I'd have to get more information from you to report that properly. How many years are left on that debt? But, but, but I'm thinking because it was transferred to Duke, or bought by Duke, we're now done with it, we're now finished with it.
We still have about 18 years of debt.
Yeah.
On that, that's what we initially had. They didn't take all of our debt, they just took a large percentage of it, and left us with, with a 20-year loan, which is now down to about 18. And that is paid right off the top.
And the reason I brought it up was I know that Smithfield, of the 32 cities in the section of the eastern, was in a lot better position than some of the others, and once that's paid off, that will be an additional revenue that belongs to the town, so to speak.
That's correct.
Just to, I'd like for us to keep our eyes on that. Thank you. Sorry to get off topic. I think it's important to point out.
Thank you for the question.
Okay. The town, the, for the single audit and grant audit this year, the federal expenditures were 2.8 million dollars, the majority of those expenditures were from the USDA. The state expenditures were 406 dollars. The single audit covers both the financial and program compliance, and what that means is we look at your financial operations, as well as your, the description that's provided by the state auditor and the federal government, as to what we are to examine. So, we examine how you use those monies, how do you comply with the regulations. There were no question costs as a result of those testing. The opinions were unmodified. The opinions on the financial statement were unmodified, which is a term that was, that's equivalent, if you will, to unqualified, which is an older terminology, terminology for auditors. What it means is we found the financial statements to be fairly stated and conformly with generally accepted accounting principles. There is one finding a significant deficiency in the audit report, that is because you uncovered, well, your, your staff uncovered, an error in the recording of a $250,000 note receivable that, the note was made in 2007, and for those of you that have been on the council for a few years, since we've been auditing it, periodically, something else is found that's an asset of the town, and it's had to be recorded, because previously it was not known about, or it was not recorded. And that correction generates a significant deficiency. It was, the note was 250,000. It had, you've been getting payments on it, so it's paid down to 221,000.
The monies that Phyllis is speaking of is the loan that the town took The monies that Phyllis is speaking of is the loan that the town took out on behalf of Town Council Smithfield Development Corporation. It was never properly recorded.
Overall, the policies and procedures we examined were sound. And this is a good or a clean audit opinion. It's the best audit opinion we give. Cooperation with your staff, that was excellent. We got the audit out in early September. There were no difficulties with management, with Greg, his staff. Everything went very, very well. It was submitted to the local government commission. It's the first town audit we submitted this year, and it was approved within a couple of days. Thank you.
And we set a record this year for completing our audit process. Town council can speak to it more clearly. Certainly since my arrival, on the front end, we were delayed getting our audit done, but never missed the deadline. But I understand that this year, as far as finishing the process, set a record. Just a quick look at some of our future financial considerations for the town. Most of these you are aware of. During the community meetings, Mike covered every one of these. I've taken the time to highlight some of the more costly ones that the town is about to undertake. We've got new sludge handling equipment estimated at three sixty-nine. And we've already spent some of that. I, I think just this morning, I was informed that the first piece of equipment that we had was damaged by Hurricane Matthew, and it has to be replaced. Fortunately, the second sludge handling equipment has arrived, so it will now be our first piece instead of our second. And then we will, once we get the insurance proceeds from the one that was damaged, we'll be ordering the second one a second time. Is that right? A little bit wordy, but okay. We are continuing at a more rapid pace to do our infiltration and inflow identification. Just last month, paid a bill to the company that's doing that for us for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We have the funds to do it because we borrowed nine hundred thousand dollars. And so we still, at this point, have some three hundred thousand dollars or roughly that's unspent for that particular project. And so it's gonna be ongoing for quite some time, but we're, have picked up the pace in trying to identify those problems. The extension of the sixteen-inch water line on Jones Brothers Tank Road to Buffalo Road, Ted could speak on that. I have a description there, but I'm, I don't have a good understanding of the project. Anything you wanna say on that? The Brogdon Substation project is in full force, well underway. Records Management System, we signed the, you guys approved the contract last meeting. That contract has been put out, and we're waiting on that company to set a schedule for us. And of course, Booker Derry Road, which you guys have been brought up to par on. This is like the overall cost. Some of this money has already been budgeted. I'm just showing you the full cost, but not all of that will take place in future years. Some of it actually took place this year. Booker Derry Road? That's happening this year, and it was a three point five million, but we'd have spent little to nothing, just maybe some preliminary. Mike, was there anything you wanted to add here?
The three point five million will actually be a loan that we haven't acquired yet. It'll most likely be a revenue bond that we have to go through some channels with LGC and acquire that money. That project is, is a, you know, a very important project and very big part of that Booker Derry Road extension. So, we've talked about that a number of times now. We're excited about getting it done, and hopefully that'll create some added economic development out through that area as well as possibly some additional residential developments. Looking forward to getting that project completed and being able to see some of the benefits from that as our, our town continues to prosper.
I have one question I'd like to ask Phyllis, based on her professional opinion. Thank you for, again, working with us this year to get this done. Looking over the, the big picture from when we were in not such a good shape to now we're at fifty-five percent of our reserve fund. My question to you is, this council has set a policy at twenty-five percent. The state minimum is eight. I'm just curious, based on your opinion, where we appear, based on other cities our size, based on your experience?
With, you're in line with the moderate cities, you know. There are, of course, cities that are going to be wealthier, but you, you used to be in the very bottom tier. The first year we did the audit, there was pretty much no fund balance. And through, part of the change is through correction of the financials, the allocation of the assets and liabilities to the proper fund, as well as your own attempts to control expenditures. So that has brought you up to where you're really just average with the most towns of your size. But you're also a town with growth, and the growth can, you know, impact the growth in the fund balance as long as your population's growing.
Travis, the UNC School of Government has a website that actually compares to town to any other town in North Carolina. So, any town that you can think of that you want to know how we compare fund balance, I can provide you with that data. You'd wanna pick a town that's comparable for certain.
Population and services. Twenty-five percent is, is excellent, and then if you do above that, considering where you were, and, you know, you, you are growing, and that increased operating cost. And it, you have to increase rates to deal with that. And then that sort of levels off, but you're doing very well over what it was. You're, you know, you're no longer being penalized by the local government commission because they were really cracking down on the town about the level of fund balance. And that's where you want to be.
The twenty-five percent policy is, yes, modest. The flip side to that, if, if we find that most towns our size is around fifty or sixty percent, and we set our policy to that, but we fail to meet it one year, then that's a write-up because we didn't meet our own, the policy that we set. So, it's kind of a catch-22.
And the other question I had, and I've looked through the report, and it's very comprehensive, as we've talked about before. But looking at the improvements we've made to our infrastructure this year, we actually spent quite a bit of money on electrical system. And I remember you told us before, but you do take in consideration the, those improvements as far as the depreciation of the older equipment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that helps us.
Once it's completed and placed in service. And with a utility fund, that can be anywhere from one year to five years because it just takes that long to construct. They, as far as the fund financial statements are concerned, because that's a governmental activity, it's an expense.
So, growth, high growth could actually run there in your fund balance?
Eh, yes. If you don't make adjustments to your tax rates and your utility rates as you grow and control your expenditures. It's very advisable for a town that's growing to have a very good capital improvement plan that covers at least five years and update it annually.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. This time, I will call on Ted for a presentation about South Smithfield Water District.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here to inform you and, and the public of an issue that arose last week concerning the Smithfield South Water District. Drinking water standard for trihalomethanes. Just as a refresher, the Smithfield South Water District is that area which is served along US 301, south of K Drive, along Walpat Road, east of 301, and that part of Brogdon Road that is east of I-95. In this map, it's the pink area, if you will, and it might be hard to see, but it's shaded in. It's the same area that was under the boil water notice when we had the hurricane for a few days. I also like to point out, this is also the part of the town that we serve as owners of the system, but we do not produce the water. The plant produces the rest of the water for the rest of town. This is the part of the town that we buy it from the county and then turn around and sell it to our customers. Last week, we received a notice violation from the state of North Carolina, which, you know, we received it on October twenty-eighth, that we exceeded the drinking limit, the MCL, maximum contaminant level, for trihalomethanes. When that part of that requires a public notification to be sent out, and we will be mailing these out as a separate mailing on November seventh, which is next Monday. What actually occurred? Trihalomethanes, or THMs as we refer to it, it's a water chemistry byproduct of chlorine disinfection. And the way it's measured is you take samples every quarter, and then you average them, the four quarters together to get a yearly number. And it's a rolling average. Every quarter, you replace the new reading and you drop off the oldest one. And the state limit, every time you do it every quarter, that average must be eighty parts per million in the trihalomethanes. Often, what, what does occur in the water that's used, we use chlorine to disinfect. When the temperature goes up, it increases the formation of these disinfection byproducts. Another issue that hel, or that hurts us is when there's low demand. If water just kind of sits in the pipes and there's not a lot of pull from them, that also increases the formation of THM. In the third quarter, in that particular part of the town, it's not only warm, but there's not a big demand. This encompasses some of the country club areas and, and they take vacations on the weekends, and we don't get a lot of demand residential that we, you know, there's very little business or industry in that area. So, it's not only warm, but it sits in the pipes warm, and then THMs go up. So, it's always, it seems to be a problem in the third quarter due to the summer heat. So, those are the last four numbers we got. Last November, it was seventy-six parts per million. In February, we got forty-five. Again, in May was seventy-five. And then August, again, was the hard, that, that's when it got really hot and we had a lot of form. It was a hundred and thirty-two parts per million. And if you do the quick math, that's eighty-two parts per million, which does exceed the eighty parts per million. So, that, that triggered violation. We did get notification of that. What does that mean to our customers? Literally, they don't have to do anything. There is nothing they can do. This is not a medical emergency of any kind. There is no need to boil their water. This is merely an exceedance of the limit the state has set forth. What should they do? Much like the Surgeon General, the state requires us to give them some language, and that's fine. Everybody, we want to have good health and, and good relations with the community. So, if they do have a severely compromised immune system, or if they're pregnant, or if they're elderly, or if they have specific health concerns, please consult your healthcare professional on what the additional trihalomethanes may mean. And then exposure to the THMs over many years could cause problems with liver, kidney, or nervous system functions and may lead to an increased risk of getting can, certain types of cancer. Had it been an actual emergency, we would have been knocking on the doors and giving out flyers immediately and telling people to turn their water off and providing water of on our own. Some, very similar to what the boil water would have, notification-wise, what we did during the boil water notice. So, what is the town doing? What are we doing on our part? The way we combat this, the only tool we really have is to flush the system. So, we're flush, flush, flushing. I can't control the temperature, none of us can, so we're gonna reduce the time the water is actually in the pipes. We're gonna pull the water through the system that'll help turn the water over that's sitting in the pipes. And increase, we're also gonna increase our sampling sites and our rate to verify that the levels are falling. In truth, the cooler temperatures in September and October probably already worked in our favor, but we're gonna make sure before we pull the sample that gets sent to the state. We've already installed three flushing systems. In, in July, we put one at Huntington Place, which is down in the country club. In October, we put two more in Quail Run and British Court. And we've ordered three more systems for Tyler Drive, Lakeside Drive, and Raindrop Circle. And these, this is the existing area, the three that we have already. Huntington, British, and Quail. They're always at the end of the dead-end line because that's where the water will sit more, so we pull it through. The three more we're gonna add, in addition to Huntington, British, and Quail, is Raindrop, Tyler, and Lakeside. Again, on the end of dead-end lines the best we can. Since this is a rolling average, that number from August of this year is gonna stick with us for a while. That's unfortunate, but that's how it's mathematically derived. So, we gotta beat these numbers for the next year. So, this adjustment to our system is gonna be permanent. That's also in response to the state. So, we continuously pull the water. So, the increased scheduling, the flushers we ordered are programmable. So, we're gonna program them to do it overnight when people sleep. And hopefully, we're also gonna stagger it. We don't wanna pull all the water out of the system and leave them with no pressure. So, we're gonna stagger all six of them through the night and pull that water through. And of course, per the violation or, or the written notification, when the levels do fall below eighty, we'll follow up with another notice saying everything's good to go. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you. Where does it go? Oh, it goes on the ground, it's potable water, so it goes to the storm drains, creeks and rivers. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate it.
I just got one question. I'm just curious, how long has the town been buying water from the county?
When South, with that particular part of the town, this, this, this water district was in and of itself its own water district. When the town annexed that part of the town, we took over ownership of that system. So, that was, whenever, this was annexed is when we became the owners of that system and we're buying from the county. I don't know when exactly that was.
Did they see a water rate increase too, like the rest of the town there, when the, when the rates increased?
Yes, sir.
It did?
Yes, sir.
We're still responsible for all the pipes and everything that are there, they're ours.
Yes, sir.
That was the same area that had the boil water advisory by the county?
Yes, sir, same, same exact system.
What was the reason for the boil water advisory?
The boil water advisory was caused because the county, the county had main breaks out in their system farther away, and they lost pressure. And if you get under twenty PSI in your lines by law, you have to issue a boil water notice. Yeah, that's, they, they worry about back siphoning or any kind of issues like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, the next item is a presentation for service awards. Okay, the next item is a presentation for service awards. When I became mayor, I didn't anticipate that I would be faced within the first year of having to deal with a natural disaster that would force me to have to sign a declaration of a state of an emergency, or to have to enact a townwide curfew. Nor did I think I'd have to deal with a horrific, excuse me, I cannot talk tonight, horrific traffic accident involving hazardous chemicals that almost led to us to have to evacuate the entire town. During the past couple of weeks, people have called, texted, and told me, "Thank you for the very difficult job that I have, and for a job well done." To those people, I say, "Thank you." But let me tell you, I haven't done anything. And my job was easy. My job was easy because I worked with a great council and with a great city manager. But most importantly, my job was easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained, are dedicated, and work tirelessly to get your power back on in a timely manner. My job was easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained, are dedicated, and work tirelessly to make sure that your water is safe to drink. My job is easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained, are dedicated, and work tirelessly to perform over forty water rescues in a two-and-a-half-day period while answering other emergency calls. My job was easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained, are dedicated, and work tirelessly to protect our homes and businesses while we were in the dark, while also answering other emergency calls. My job is easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained, dedicated, and work tirelessly to clear the trees and the debris from our streets in order to make them safe to travel. My job is easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained, are dedicated, and work tirelessly by coming in on a Sunday morning to prepare the emergency declaration so that we could receive state and federal assistance. My job is easy because I can rely on trusted professionals that are properly trained and dedicated and work tirelessly by posting very valuable information on social media so that our citizens stay well informed. My job was easy and is easy for many other reasons, but these are just some of the highlights that I wanted to share this evening. These professionals that I speak of are our town employees. No matter what size their contribution, whether small or large, whether they are an individual contributor or a team contributor, whether they like to be behind the scenes, or like my daughter, the front of the stage in the spotlight, they all make up an important piece of the puzzle that makes Smithfield such a great place to live, work, and play. As mayor, I'm proud to be serving with such a great team. And to the citizens here in the audience, and to the citizens that are watching on television, you should be proud of your employees. Now, as a little token of the council's appreciation for their service to the town, the town council would like to present each employee with a twenty-five-dollar gift card. I know this is a very small token, but it's just a token of our appreciation to everything that our employees do to make our jobs easier and make this such a great place to live. So I'd also like to read this letter from the council. It says, "Dear valued town of Smithfield employee, we would like to take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for your hard work and dedication to the town of Smithfield. Daily, you serve the citizens and visitors of Smithfield in your respective position with diligence and enthusiasm, oftentimes going completely unnoticed. Please know that your commitment to the town of Smithfield is noticed not only by management but by the governing body and the citizens. Our employees are a most valuable asset. Your willingness and desire to assist one another and the citizens of Smithfield is to be commended." Now, this time, I'd like to call up each department head to come forward and receive their gift cards. I will ask you to wait to distribute these to your employees. We kind of wanted to do this as a surprise to the employees for their dedication and their service to Smithfield. And I asked you to wait probably until Thursday to at least distribute those so that we can photocopy the letter and have one for each employee. So when you give out the gift cards, if you will, provide them with the letter also.
So Mike, here's your package for general government.
Thank you.
Fire Department, please. Police Department, Keith. Parks and Rec, Gary. And I did want to add, this is for full-time employees. It's very difficult to get all our part-time employees to say, "All right, full-time employees." Sanitation, Lenny. Garage, Appearance, Streets. Thank you, sir. Water, Sewer, Ted. Electric. Yes, sir. Planning. All. Thank you, sir. Ponits. I think that's it. So again, thanks again for your service to the town of Smithfield. Now, this time, we will move on with our agenda, our public hearings. I'll ask those, anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this public hearing, to please stand and be sworn in by the clerk. Is the applicant here? Could please stand and be sworn in?
Please raise your right hand. Do you finally affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth to overcome?
I do.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, the first item is CUP 16-10, Victor Hugo Garcia Rizzo. Paul, I will turn that over to you.
Hey, let me reference to you on the map where the project site is. It's out here next to Heidi's Two-Wheel Cafe. And you have a larger view here. This is US 70 West, this is Rose Manor Shopping Center, this is Heidi's Two-Wheel Cafe, this is the old hip and motor, this is the house that we're talking about.
The consideration here is to grant a conditional use permit for residential use in a business district. The property is located on the southwest side of Market Street, approximately a hundred ninety feet southeast of the intersection with Park Avenue. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for residential use within a B-three zoning district. The property is a small two-point-nine-two acre, excuse me, point-two-nine-two acre tract of land with an existing single-family residence dwelling. It has been converted in the past to accommodate commercial uses. However, no parking lot was ever constructed, and the reason for that is that the square footage requirement did not require a paved parking lot. It could be a gravel parking lot, and what was there in the past would suffice for that. Our requirement says that the parking lot only has to be paved if it has five spaces or more, and their requirement was only three. So that's why there's not a parking lot there. A large accessory building is located to the rear of the principal structure. A horseshoe-shaped driveway provides access to West Market Street. The property is adjacent to Heidi's Two-Wheel Cafe. The proposed use will be single-family residential. There does not appear to be any environmental issues associated with the use. The zoning is B-three to the northeast, northwest, and southeast, and to the southwest, it is R-28. The property considered for approval contains a single-family dwelling that has been converted for commercial use to capitalize on the existing B-three zoning district. Several commercial uses have cycled through the property over the last ten years. The property has now been vacant for several years and has recently been marketed for residential. The property has now sold and the new owner is requesting that the property be permitted for residential purposes. The town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance allows for residential uses within the B-three district with a valid conditional use permit issued by the council. This is proposed and is consistent with the strategic growth plan. It is consistent with the Unified Development Code, and it is compatible with surrounding land uses. Rose Manor Shopping Center is just behind, not Shopping Center, but Rose Manor Community is subdivision is immediately behind it. There will be no signs on it since it will be for residential use. Fire protection will be by the town of Smithfield. It will have, I know it says, "No impact on school impact on schools or recreational," but there could be, with the family being there, there'd be some limited impact on schools and on recreational assets. The access street is from West Market. Water and Sewer is town of Smithfield, and it would be a Duke Progress Energy customer. The planning department recommends approval of this request, and the planning board, at its October 6 meeting unanimously voted to recommend approval. The town council has now asked to take it into consideration and render a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Emblor. Does the applicant have any other information that you would like to? Do you agree with everything that Mr. Emblor stated? Any questions from the council this time? Will we close? Have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Mayor, I move to approve the motion. It's stated in the agenda packet on pages twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kerry's. Mayor, I move to approve your request.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Matt. Councilman Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Question carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Emblor.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'll come to point in the meeting for citizens' comments. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. If you will, please state your name and address for the record, and if you will, hold your comments to at least, to a maximum of three minutes, please.
I apologize, I didn't get this in before the agenda, so I'd be all right if I sneak in now. I'm Peggy Scott. I live here in Smithfield, and I'm the chairperson for the Appearance Commission. After the storm, I noticed a lot of trees were down, and we got to thinking about, and there's things in the Appearance Commission that already maybe addressed some of this, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. We have in place a program funded by the very generous contributions from the JB and the JP George Foundation. It allows us to plant trees throughout our city in the right-of-ways for beautification purposes. And a lot of trees had fallen in the right-of-ways, and people were worried, "How are they going to replace those trees?" And here's funding right within our own reach. So I just wanted to inform the citizens of Smithfield, if they have lost trees along the right-of-way by their homes and would like the trees replaced, we can offer that to you at no charge. In fact, if you would like to add trees to your landscape along your property lines in the right-of-ways, please let us know. Your request will certainly be considered. The trees can be replaced or added with any kind of tree that is approved by the commission and Lenny Branch of the Public Works Department. So contact Town Hall or the Public Works Department with your information, the type of tree you would prefer, and someone will get back to you. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Okay. This time, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Submove.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. All votes. Motion carries. We'll move to business items. Page sixty-nine in your agenda. First item of business is consideration and approval of bid awarding an amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-nine cents with Superior Recreation for the acquisition and installation of playground equipment at Gertrude B. Johnson Park.
Hey, Mayor and Council, in this year's budget in the calendar night, and we were allocated fifty thousand dollars for the upgrades to Johnson Park over on Seventy. We sent out RFPs to four suppliers that we knew of that provide quality equipment in the area. We received two back. One was from Bars Recreation in Apex. The other was from Superior Recreation of the Carolinas. The proposals were to meet four criteria. It had to have a playground unit for ages two to five, a playground unit for five to twelve, an independent swing set, and an independent climbing wall. Both turned in competitive bids. Bars Recreation was at thirty-eight, five eighty-three. Superior Recreation was a little bit more at thirty-nine, nine ninety-one, eighty. However, the playground that they supplied for that additional fifteen, roughly fifteen-hundred dollars was far more than what we were getting from Bars. We feel that the better bang for the buck is with Superior Recreation.
I move to approve the request.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Question.
Do they take the old equipment out, Gary?
No, we'll do that ourselves. And the additional money that's left in the, we had to put in the mulch, the new mulch, border, and that kind of thing around it, but it's cheaper for us to do that than it would be for them to do that. It probably won't even be salvageable. I mean, by the time we get it out of the ground, it'll probably be so warped that it won't be usable. And the merry-go-round out there is, you know, is a safety hazard anyway, so. Yeah, I mean, the metal parts we'll take to the scrapyard.
Just a quick thought on merry-go-rounds. I know they're not. I know you probably don't like those, right?
I know.
But we went camping this a few months ago.
They still sell them, but they're not, it's not my favorite piece of equipment.
The park that we were at had a merry-go-round, one of the old merry-go-rounds, just like this one. I don't think my kids had ever, well, I know my youngest probably hasn't seen one. We had about twenty-two kids with us. I think that's packed the entire time. About fifteen or sixteen kids on, they had a ball. I understand the state. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have a motion in a second, right? All in favor, say aye. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Next item is authorization to apply for an AFG grant to replace aging air packs.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Before you have a request for authorization to apply for an AFG grant, AFG grant is put out through FEMA, and it is an Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. They allot, this year they have allotted three-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars to support fire and EMS operations for safety grants, firefighting, and emergency vehicles. In our research, trying to find ways to help offset cost, our aging air packs, we would like to apply for this grant to help replace these air packs that are aging. Last year, we applied for this grant and were unsuccessful in receiving it. This year, again, we want to apply for it as well. This grant opened on October eleventh, and it will close on November eighteenth. If awarded and allowed to apply for this grant, we should know within eight to twelve months, which would put us in the next budget year, seventeen-eighteen. As far as the financial impact, this grant is a ninety-five percent, five percent grant, meaning that they will pay for ninety-five percent of the cost of the air packs. The town's responsibility would be five percent. In this case, the financial impact to the town will be twenty thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. The total amount of the grant we're asking for is four-hundred-and-forty thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and this will replace the entire amount of air packs we have. We're talking about thirty-six air packs with two extra bottles each, fifteen additional air masks, the air compressor that we use at the station to refill them with as well. So with this, we are seeking authorization to apply for this grant. Are there any questions?
Financial impact will not occur during this budget year.
No, sir.
Just curious, how, these air packs?
Yes, sir.
How long do they last?
Well, typically, the air bottles themselves are fifteen-year bottles. They are composite. They're able to be tested, but at the end of the third year, which would be the twenty-year mark, they're non-compliant, and the air packs as well are the same. So they were purchased, I think, in two thousand two, three, in two different purchases. One year was purchased, I think, half, and the next year was purchased another half. So they're in the capital improvement plan. They're up for replacement in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So we're still going to have to incur this cost, but we're trying to seek areas of helping offset that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. At this time, we've come to the point of council members' comments.
We could all probably sit here and talk all night, but I just want to say thank you to the town staff, too. You know, I saw a lot of things that we don't know goes on behind the scenes during these two events. And to say I was impressed would be understepping. I was really amazed at the organization, not only in this town, but the county as well in the response to both of these matters. I just thank y'all very much and thank your staff. And I've heard more citizen comments about how great our employees are during the two or three weeks of those events. It's just been incredible.
Mayor, I so would like to echo what Councilman Ashley and you stated earlier. One of the concerns I have is during storms, I notice, obviously, when the power goes out, the intersections and traffic lights as well go out, and that ties up law enforcement in those main intersections or creates a hazard. I just wonder if we can look at ways that we could possibly have some type of backup for those systems. I know there is some, and maybe some grant money we can get to put them in place, or if nothing, for the main intersection, because that was a huge impact. But that's a very small part to the bigger picture. And the other concern I have is, and I know our staff worked hard to get it fixed, but it was a little bit frustrating to find out when our power went off that it was gonna, it was estimated the timeframe it was to cut back on, and it was completely out of our staff's hands. You know, I would just wonder if, I feel like we should, as a city, reach a higher priority. I don't know all the details, so I'm just going to put that out there. But I also would like to say thank you to our staff for what they did.
Yeah, well, I can say that I had numerous conversations with Duke Energy and especially with Marty Clayton, and he was very responsive. He was calling me at ten o'clock at night. And we had several conversations over those periods of time. Even though they couldn't really give us a good estimate of when, he was calling me and updating me and letting me know, you know, when he thought he could get it back on, you know, at least. But I do appreciate your comment, and I appreciate your comments, both on the intersections and on that issue.
Well, I had, I think I had a discussion like about, maybe we can put on our website, that when the power's out, treat a stop lighted intersection as a four-way stop to just inform the citizenry and the traveling public. And also, I didn't know that we get the calls on our landlines, but to get them on your cellphone, you have to call in and register.
Emergency notification.
And I don't, there are a lot of citizens that don't know that. Maybe we can put that on the website, too.
Do you have comments from the council?
Turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a few things I'd like to mention. As you leave tonight, please take note that the Streetscape project on Market Street is complete. The Appearance Commission and utilities have that all done. The lights are all on and fully operational. Looks really nice out there. Our Greenway, we've been talking about repairing that. We were waiting for the water to go down to ascertain if we had additional damage. We do not, that we can see. We had the engineer out to look at the problem area that we had previously approved for repair, and it is in the same condition it was prior to the hurricane. So they are prepared, and the contract has been signed to get that fixed. However, we have seen lately that water is being released from Falls Lake, which is why we see the water so high in the river right now, and we cannot undergo those repairs until that water goes down. So that release of water is supposed to be done by the end of the week, so hopefully by next week, that water level will be decreased and we'll be able to undertake those repairs. We do have our fourth community meeting for District Two, the north side, scheduled for next week, on Thursday, November seventeenth. That will be at the Recreation and Aquatic Center and begin at six-thirty. So I encourage anyone from that district or from other districts who were not able to make their specific meetings to attend that meeting, ask any questions and bring any questions with you that you might have for either the council or staff. Also, our Brogdon Road Transformer has been set and is becoming operational. Hopefully, it will be generating and producing electricity by the end of this month. So that is a huge step in our advancement of our electric utility throughout the town and for economic development in the future. Last, the Smithfield Parks and Recreation Department announced today that they have acquired the two thousand seventeen girls' state softball tournament of the Tar Heel League to come to Community Park in July. So we will have that tournament again in Smithfield this summer. That's a big financial bonus for us, as well as some prestige for Parks and Recreation for being able to put on such a large, large tournament, recognized throughout the state. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, that concludes our regular meeting. We need to go into a closed session. Entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-eighteen dash eleven, Section A five, to consult with our attorney on potential real estate property acquisition. Have a motion in a second. A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. We're in a closed session at this time. Thank you.